No, we'll speak on this side where we signed it. See that one? Let's go ahead and get this meeting started. It is six thirty-one. Roll call. Abe is here.
Present.
We don't have a present commissioner appointed by Mr. Rial. So that means Abe is here. Pleasure of allegiance. Mr. Uzhan, can you lead us?
Yes, I'm ready. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Uzhan. Approval of agenda?
So move.
Uh, the motion to approve, a second?
Second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
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 Alright, public comments? Anybody that would like to speak on any other matter other than the agenda? Speak now. Nobody? Alright. Presentation or consent agenda? Commissioners, you got an opportunity to check the agenda? We're also missing approval of the minutes, right?
Right.
Yeah, we're missing that.
Yeah, what is that for you?
Oh, so we're not approving minutes, okay.
Well, you're right, you're right here.
Where is it at?
Right there, consent agenda.
What's the agenda?
Well, no, it's right there.
Oh, sorry, I'm sorry.
But we only have one set of minutes.
Got it.
And we have...
And then we got another one, right? You got it. Okay. Well, I have a comment on the, on the minute. Let's see.
Which minute?
The, uh, the, uh, here. The, the April twenty-fifth minute.
Okay.
Let's see, what was my comment? Can't hear myself all right. Well, one of the things, one of the things I mentioned was that I would like for Mr. Roskis to, to remind us with an email, but not just on a normal circus, only because we didn't have enough planning commissioners and perhaps maybe, you know, it would be harder to get a quorum. That was the reason why. Not, you know, if we had a full staff, then we'd need to remind, we're adults.
We should have, we should have, or there should be a quorum for the next meeting. We know that the next council meeting, there may be appointing new planning commissioner. So there should be one either for the headquarter or the bottom floor.
I just want, I just wanted to add that it was because of a new circumstance, not because that will be a normal procedure that I would want to have. And then the other, the other thing is, is that I see there's a lot of like recommendations, but we never followed through. Like, you know, we recommended, or we assigned to have a letter written to council to let them know that if they don't appoint someone within forty-five days, we would like to do it. So we don't know how, where that ended. And this, and these are here, right? Let's see. Comments that Mr. Uzhan made also? Uh, like, like he said, uh, how do we proceed with the comment Mr. Uzhan made that he wants it to read? Uh, if there's three consecutive meetings that we miss, then, then we could, you know, get somebody else. But where, where does that end? Is there a recommendation?
Huh? To change the balance?
Yeah, so how, what's the procedure? We gotta take it, you know? We just seem to recommend things and never, they never get back to us.
The, the, on the item for the, um, I was gonna say guidelines, bylaws, I'm sorry. And those, there were some, uh, recommendations there. I, I did speak with the city clerk about that, what the procedure was. She did tell me that what needs to be done is that bylaws need to be approved with the, with the recommendations to the council. And then staff would, will take it to the council, uh, to indicate that it's been approved with the, with the recommendations and the changes to be made. If the council goes ahead and approves or, or takes in the, the recommendation of the planning commission, then those changes will be done and the bylaws, and it will be brought back. If the council denies the recommendations, then the bylaws will stay as they are.
Okay.
So...
But what I wanna get to is that, what procedure should we have that we don't forget about this? Like, maybe if we recommend something in a meeting, at the next minute, let's make sure it's there, even if it's not done, you know, we're following through on this, it's gonna take two weeks to get the bylaws, something of that nature, because we all forget about it, and then a year later, we ask the same question. What happened, what happened with this?
Yeah.
And then we do the whole thing again.
We'll be, we'll be bringing that back to you at the next meeting.
Okay.
We'll make sure of that.
Thank you.
So it's gonna be on the council agenda to approve? It's going to be on the council agenda before you report back to us?
No, it's gonna come back to the planning commission for approval of the, of the bylaws with a recommendation of changes to it. And then at that point, it will be taken to the city council, uh, for the approval of the bylaws, requesting these changes that the planning commission had, had requested. And then at that point, depending on what the council, whether they approve or deny the, the, the recommendations, then it will be brought back to the planning commission. So we'll go ahead and prepare that, and then we'll put the, we'll do a staff report as to what we'll be sending to the, uh, city council, so that you can review that, and then either go ahead and approve staff's, uh, report, or if you wanna make any changes to it. Thank you.
So we're still on the, uh, minutes. Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
Make the motion. So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second, all's in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Alright, uh, public hearing items? You wanna skip number two?
Well, I, I like to reverse them if possible. We, we have a gentleman from out of town, so we can take care of him, and then he can be on his way.
Alright, let's proceed then.
So which one we...
We're gonna do number three, the AM PM convenience store and fueling station. Conditional use permit is being requested. With eighteen gas fueling. This is a new gas station? Oh, it's a new one.
So anyone that they wanna build in the Grand Plaza? You can show us in the map exactly where, is that, is that on, is that the map?
Yeah.
Are we gonna open the public hearing?
Yes. There is a public hearing?
Yeah, it is a public hearing, yes.
Alright, let's go ahead and open the public hearing. It is six thirty-nine. Thank you, Ms. Collex, for reminding.
Okay, we're gonna do a quick presentation on it, and then we'll open the public hearing, okay? Alright. The item before you is a conditional use permit to allow the operation of a convenience store, car wash, and fueling station located at eight eighty-eight West Second Street. The city code does require issuance of a conditional use permit for the establishment and use of fueling pump stations. When the applicant first came in, we advised them that, that a conditional use permit would be required per the ordinance in order to operate, um, the convenience store with fueling stations in the city. The public hearing was noticed, including direct mailing to all property owners located within five hundred feet of the project site. It was also, um, put in the Callexico Chronicle and posted on the city's website. So there's not, I don't, the public didn't seem to turn out, but the applicant's here. The project site consists of one point four, uh, four or five acres, undeveloped land located at Grand Plaza Outlets on the property perimeter. The property is zoned commercial highway, so the current zoning is in conformity with the general plan. In your matrix there on page two, uh, you can see the site is bordered by the Callexico Airport on the south and east, uh, by the international border on the west, and... No, okay, um, okay, west by Imperial County zoning. So all that's indicated in the matrix there on page two of your, of your staff report. When the plans were submitted, um, the plans do indicate that there's a total of ten cars and, uh, there's parking for ten cars and seven clean air vehicles adjacent to the convenience store. The code requires one per three hundred square, uh, feet of building area, and the building's thirty-six hundred, so, so they're providing, uh, more than, than they actually need. Again, there's a, there is a covered, there's an automatic car wash facility that's also proposed. Access to the site is proposed from the first driveway entrance into Grand Plaza Outlets while heading north on Second Street. You can see that right here? This is Second Street. And that first entrance into Grand Plaza.
Where is that located, right there? The first entrance where?
Yeah. First stoplight where the, and I think there's palm trees over here. So, yeah. So you turn left, and then you make another quick left, and it's that pad, that first pad.
Is that a parking lot right now? No. Is that just standing?
It's not part of the parking lot, it's, it's just, it's sand, there's a bunch of sand there. So the parking lot's right here, it does, the parking lot, um...
The first entrance is a, is a, is a signal light, isn't it?
Yeah.
The first, the first main.
The first signal light, right.
Mark, motion for the gun club meeting? Gun club, wait.
Yeah, probably further down.
Further down.
Yeah. This is a, sort of an obert shaped parcel, see, it goes like that. So these, um, they're using this part of the parcel for the clean air vehicles, and then, you know, he has parking in front of the store, which is here, and then the car wash is, is, um, on this west side. So to get to the car wash, you would come in like this, and then, or you could actually go all the way around here, see, you come, come in there, and then exit, exit out here. So you've got car wash, convenience store, and fueling stations here.
So to get to the gas station, you have to go into the, the center, right?
Yeah, you have to come into that main, um, outlet.
Yeah. It doesn't interfere with Second Street traffic?
No. No, you get, you get off of Second Street, you come into the center. And then this is all the existing parking that's there now.
It's on commercial?
Yeah, commercial highway. Okay, uh, let's see here. So according to the general plan, the commercial highway designation should provide for the traction of, um, just about any type of commercial business. So, um, developments such as this should be of high quality and meet the best standards possible in order to project a positive image of the city.
The gentleman is appointing other gas station? You already have some gas stations that you're appointing?
Yeah, I have that myself.
Open it, bro. Are you done? We can open it.
I think the architectural engineer, or I think the one with our very wrongy, a huge arcus station with that big car wash.
Well, you know what? We're gonna open the public hearing right now, and then you can... Yeah, let's get through the presentation, then we'll open it up for comments. Okay, so there's some different motions available to you. But because the use is compatible with the surrounding uses of the area, um, it is staff's recommendation that the proposed conditional use permit be approved by, by taking the following action. And the action is listed there as, as number one, motion to adopt applicable findings and conditions under Planning Commission Resolution two thousand sixteen-four, Attachment One, approving the conditional use permit. Now you can go ahead and open up the public hearing. Here's those in favor or opposed.
The public hearing? Before the public hearing? Yeah, that's what I know. It is, uh, six forty-six. At this moment, would anybody like to speak on this, uh, item? In favor? Go ahead, please state your name.
Thank you, Alex Cuevas, I represent the architectural engineering firm for this project, AGC Design Concept. I'm here to answer any questions that you might have related to the project, to answer the questions you had before. Yeah, we have done, I don't wanna say how old I am, but we have done way, way too many stations. Uh, I guess not too many, but we have done a lot, a lot of stations. Close by here, the one in Brawley, that Arco Station, that has a huge car wash, kind of unusual car wash, full serve, I mean, self-serve, but you can drive through your car, with your car, through the car wash, the tunnel, dry your car. This one is gonna be a little bit different, smaller, it's not as big, the land is not that big. Um, it's an empty lot, it's all dirt right now, we're surrounded by the parking lot. Uh, other projects that we have done, Indio, we did quite a few in Indio, Jefferson, Forty Second, also in Coachella, so that's what we do. My, my office is what we do, we concentrate, uh, in gas stations and fast food, Starbucks, Del Tacos, and naming. Uh, most of the stuff that we do is commercial. I, I just wanna, I asked you a couple minutes ago a question. This, also this application includes the off-sales of beer and wine. This is a typical Arco AM PM that is gonna sell beer and wine, off-sale, obviously, now.
Yeah, but that's not gonna be with us. The beer and wine application is not gonna be, uh, I think that's a separate, separate agenda item, right? Yeah, that's what the council...
Being a, a commercial zone, that type of sales i- is allowed, but he, they would have to go through the ABC department in, in order to, to put in their application. But, uh, yeah, it, it is an allowable, uh, sale that they can make within that zoning area.
No, it, yeah, that, that's what I just wanna make clear. Obviously, we are gonna purchase the license from ABC and go through the entire process of, you know, backcheck and, and all that stuff.
Thank you, Ms. Collex.
Any questions?
Well, not yet until we close the public hearing, right?
Okay. Thank you.
Alright. Any else in favor of the project? Anybody opposing the project? Alright, let's go ahead and close the public hearing now. It is six fifty. Commissioners, questions? Comments? Well, Mr. Roskis, I got, I got a question. Just since... Since it's a gas station, why isn't there a required environmental review?
Because it's exempt, that's why we, that's why we do the staff report. If you look at the first page, this project is exempt from formal and violent review pursuant to section one five three three two, A through D infill development of CQ guidelines. It's an infill project, there's already infrastructure there, there's Grand Plaza Outlets.
That's why.
If it was on its own, that might...
If it was by itself, then...
Yeah. So we can exempt those types of projects.
Got it. Because there was already a CQ in the whole project.
Yeah, there was a, there's two EIRs, one for the first phase of Grand Plaza, and then one for the second phase.
That makes sense. And, uh, go ahead, Ms. Collex.
The reason I ask about the gun club is, uh, there was, uh, people saying that the gun club issue has not been resolved with the city. I just don't want that to, that this gentleman was open this gas station. I don't know how far away this project is from the gun club, 'cause I, doesn't the, the state still own part of the Grand Plaza with the RDA monies or the, 'cause council never fix, resolve that. So I just don't want the gentleman here to invest a bunch of money on something and then, um...
Move.
Get in trouble, or get the city in trouble.
Yeah, that, that project is, is not close to the gun club, so, and, and basically the, the, what's on the gun club is parking area, so there's no structure planned for, for that, uh, area. So I really can't say where this matter is at, whether they have been resolved or not, um, I'm not part of that, uh, negotiating team. But I, what I can say is that the, this, uh, project that's going up is not where the gun club is.
Okay.
Questions, Commissioner? I don't see any problem, this is, it's just like any other business, especially this has already been through, uh, review, the permit, and EIR. There's a lot of, uh, comment on EIR, it's commercial property, they can build anything they want, if they exempt from environmental. Uh, I was concerned about traffic, but it's not on, uh, it, it doesn't have entrance and exit to Second Street, so, uh, that's, doesn't seem to be a problem. Well, this is thinking about, uh, the mall in the central, they have a gas station there. That would be something very similar, so I don't see any problem with that. It's another business of Callexico and more taxes, I would go for it.
Alright. Any other question?
I have a question. Well, um, first of all, who's Gabriel Gutierrez? And is this engineering technician? Is he part of staff or is he from? I see it a, as part of the attachments on the comments. I'm reading his list, and it says Gabriel O. Gutierrez, engineering tech, CC, to staff.
Oh, staff, yeah, I'm sorry, yeah.
Oh.
Yeah.
So he's a consultant staff for the city? No?
He's a part-time staff.
Yeah.
Oh.
Part-time.
Okay.
Sorry about that.
Yeah, threw it for a loop right there.
Throw me out there.
Okay, yeah. Well, I'm looking at his applica, I'm, I'm at his comments on his list, and the first one, it says, um, um, all applicable impact fees and plan check fees and inspection fees. Um, that's one of the questions I was gonna ask. We don't see in your report that they will be paying any impact fees. Are they going to pay impact fees?
They're, they're going to pay all the applicable fees that, that they need to pay, which is the impact, uh, of, uh, engineering fees, if there has to be any...
Fire fees and police fees.
And building fees, yes.
Are they gonna be using that formula, or is that gonna be something coordinated with?
Well, there's a formula that, that they pay, and yeah, they, they, they use the, the new formula that has been put upon the, the city.
Okay. So, who calculates that? 'Cause in the past, it was, I know there was confusion between staff as to finance or engineering.
Well, each department calculates their, their own fees, for example, building, uh, or development services calculates the, the fees for building, planning, uh, and engineering. And then the, the fire fees are calculated by the fire department. And, uh...
And those are submitted over to you for you to collect from the developer, or...
In, in the past, what's been happening, I've been having conversations with, with the, uh, fire staff, is that they have been collecting their own fees. So we're kinda working together to put a, a, on the, on the, uh, receipt form, the fire fees there, so that it's, is, you know, we make sure that everything is collected. But at this point, uh, until that's done, at this point, then, any, any fire fees that needs to be collected is, is collected by the fire department.
The reason why I'm asking is because I've, I've heard and I've seen from council that, um, a lot of these projects have been expedited, and somehow they omitted the impact fees. And when they were brought back to, um, staff, or staff sent notices to these developers, there was some confusion and some, um, you know, um, questions as to why they forgot, or they didn't bring up those fees from the first phase.
Yeah.
From the review stage.
Yeah.
And they were taken by surprise that there were additional fees...
Afterwards.
Afterwards.
Well, we gotta, we gotta make sure that the fees are paid, and usually, for the most part, the developers we've been working with are, are usually pretty good in, in doing that. Where the fees may fall back sometimes is with the, uh, engineering, because with engineering, sometimes they'll, depending on the size of the project, they'll go ahead and break up the fees, maybe pay a certain percentage upfront, and then, uh, before the CFO is, is signed off, then they pay the other, the other portion. But with all the other departments, then the fees are paid, all fees are paid upfront.
So we'll make sure that we collect all impact fees before the CO, the CFOs are signed off?
Yes.
Okay.
No other questions?
No other questions?
How long, how long is this gonna take for you guys? Once we prove it, how long before they get their permit and they can break ground?
Well, uh, this type of project, we probably end up having to send it to a consultant plan checker. Um, they, they've been pretty good. If, if, if the architects, uh, uh, have a, a good, complete set of plans, and they should, I mean, as many, uh, this type of project that they've done, then it shouldn't take long, I would say, shouldn't take, hopefully it shouldn't take more than thirty days.
Well, it's not going to conflict with the new port of entry links? I'm still confused as to how is that...
No, because it's...
Since Chavez is going to work.
Yeah, it's, it's far enough where, where, you know, there, there won't be that, that conflict, as far as where the new port of entry is.
'Cause is that the signal light?
And where the gas station is, yeah.
Alright.
Any other question, Commissioner? No? Alright, is there a motion on the floor?
Yeah, I make a motion to approve.
Alright, so, say which one?
Approving, uh...
They are, they're too short here.
And the first one, read it. Yeah, read the first, uh...
Mr. Roskis wants to make a motion to approve the permit as submitted with adoption of the required findings and conditions.
Yes.
That's the one?
Yes.
Alright. All's in favor? I mean, is there a second?
Second.
Second, all's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Alright, motion passed? Alright. Thank you, guys.
Good luck.
It's a good thing, it'll create jobs in Callexico.
Well, not part-time, just strong. Item number two. Mr. Morales.
Yeah, this is the vacation of section of, uh, section of Sheridan between Ollie and Harold, and, uh, the finding of consistency with general plan pursuant to government code section sixty-five four oh two. And basically, uh, this is from the last time we brought this, uh, to the planning commission, where there's a piece of property that has an existing building that, which sits at a ninety thousand square foot lot. This one was used by the armory, or, or as an armory, excuse me, uh, by the National Guard, as well as a community center. Since then, because the building has been vacant for such a long time, that it has become deteriorated, and the cost of renovation, uh, would be almost cause prohibitive to, to be done. So the best usage for this property at this point would be to demolish the building, combine both properties, uh, the existing armory building and, and the Heber Park, and by combining both, which would total approximately two hundred thousand square feet, uh, that could be used as a potential skate park, an enclosed multi-purpose area, a potential baseball diamond, or soccer field, which, uh, multi-usage could be utilized at the same time. Uh, so then at this point, um, it was the direction of the planning commission to go out and, and do a public hearing and, and, uh, request comments from the public. And so what staff did, they went ahead and went out and they sent out letters to all the residents within, I think it was five, five hundred, uh, feet in a, in a circular area, uh, to receive comments. So what we'd like to do is open for the public hearing to acquire comments.
Alright, let's go ahead and open the public hearing. It is seven o'clock. Is there anybody that would like to speak in favor of this project? Anybody that would like to speak against this project? Alright, no comments, so let's go ahead and close the public hearing. Seven thirty-two. Alright, commissioners? Seems like we've talked about this enough, alright?
Yes, um, but Gabby's here, and she lives in the area.
She lives right across the street from...
Can you please come up and say a few words?
Yes, please.
Gabby, you can represent your mom. You can come and speak behalf of your mom. That's okay. She lives right there.
Well, you live right next door too.
Hi, Gabby Garcia, 927 Ollie Avenue. And the only thing I can tell you is that I discussed it with my mother and my family and all they're concerned about is that it doesn't stay a vacant lot. That there is a project on it and they have no problems about the closing of the street. But they do want the building demolished as soon as possible cause it's an eyesore for the community.
I definitely agree with you with eyesore. This supposedly that already had gone through a bid and somebody won the bid. There was a bid process already for demolition and somebody won the bid. And it was supposed to, last time I spoke to Nick Fenny, he says like in January, they're starting demolition and we're already in May and nothing has happened. So I mean, anything to do with the demolition that really has to do with city staff knowing, you know, where we are with that, I think is an eyesore. I definitely agree with you. It needs to be demolished and cleaned up because this can also be a fire hazard to the area.
There is a big problem because there are people that are now entering that building. There's people that live there. There's homeless. There's drugs.
Yeah.
Stuff going on in that building. We see them going in through the back. They jump the windows. They do... You know, they're inside the building, so the sooner they demolish it, the better it is for us, the neighbors in the area, because we won't have that anymore. And if they're planning on, you know, planting grass and making it a nice green area, then yes, we're in favor of it. We just don't want a dirt lot in front of it. But the building definitely has to go and I know the city's about to do that.
So you're in favor of abandoning that street?
I don't have a problem with abandoning this street. I don't know if my neighbors do, but... We don't have a problem with it.
Okay.
Thank you. I mean, if it's gonna benefit the community by making the park bigger and clean, then let's, I'm all in favor. But if we're gonna be approving something tonight and in another six months, things are gonna be the same, then I'm not in favor of that. If we're gonna do something, then let's get it done. If we're gonna close the street for the purpose of making the park bigger and putting all the good stuff, baseball court, football court, whatever it is, just make it nice, I'm all in favor. I'm just thinking if I live in this area and I seen that armory building for about five or six years or maybe 10 years, it's an eyesore and now the city's gonna come and tell me, "Let's close the street" and we'll build a beautiful area right away. What makes me believe that if I approve in tonight a closure of the street, it will benefit the community? That's what I wanna know. Because I can vote on it to close it and it will stay the same. And you know what? At the end, we didn't gain anything. We took away from traffic, you know, because people driving on that street to get to the other side. And so it would be for them, I would say probably not the same as before because now they have to make a bigger, a bigger ride to get to the other side. So people that used to drive every day on this street, probably it's a shortcut for them. Probably a fire, you know, an ambulance or, you know, a fire engine can get to some of these houses faster than if the street were closed. We have to look at that point from safety. Not only just closing it and say, "For the heck of it, let's make a bigger park." Because the bigger, the bigger it is, the more maintenance you're gonna have. You know that. Right now, the maintenance, I don't know if it's... If we are able to maintain what we have right now. But if we're gonna make it bigger for the purpose of making the community benefiting from it, I'm all in favor. I mean, let's look at the pros and cons and make a good decision and make it happen.
Well, I think one of the things to be realistic is that staff can't guarantee you that it's gonna be built in a year. City council can change their mind if they want to. That's the reality, right?
That's correct.
So is there really a risk? You want them to tell you, "Yeah, we will." It ain't gonna happen?
No, but they might have some inside information we don't have.
One of the things that, on the positive side of that park there is that the census tract that it's in, the income level is a lot lower in that area. And so that park would be at a better position to receive state and federal funds for improvements than the park over at Cordova, which is on the other side. And what you're looking at, if you're going for state funds, one of the things that they look is what is the benefit for the low income, low and very low income? So where's your low and very low? Would be over at the Heber Park and where the armory is at because of the families that live around the area versus one of the other parks. The way I see it, the disadvantage in leaving the street there is that you're gonna have two parks then. You're gonna be separated. One of the drawbacks that maybe you could look at is the fact that you will have traffic there. If you leave the street there, you will have vehicle traffic. So what happens if you have a kid running from one park to the next park and running across the street in front of a vehicle? Versus the fact if you have it all closed and you have one big park, then you don't have that possibility of something like that happening. I mean, there's a lot of scenarios that you can look at. And so basically, one of the things that the city needs is more parks, regional parks. And that's what you would end up having. There's a large park that you could have multi-usage there. Maybe we don't put a, they don't put a skate park in the area. But if you have two baseball fields and two soccer fields, then what does that mean? You got two more teams that can practice on those parks. So those are the things that you gotta look at. It may not happen in six months and maybe it won't happen in a year, but we're setting up the stage for it to get improvements done to it where the city can go for state and federal funding to improve that park, to put maybe more restrooms in there. I think right now there's some funding that the city has that's gonna go into Heber Park and do some of the improvements. I don't know whether they've been earmarked to do certain things already. If not, then maybe it could be utilized to maybe do some, throw some seeds and start growing some grass in there. But again, that is the potential. One of the biggest cries that we hear from the community is, "We need more parks." Well, that's one step forward to getting one more park in the city.
Two things, Ralph. I used to drive, well, we drive by that park almost every day. And what I noticed in the past two to three weeks is somebody cut the fence open and so now you could just walk right in.
At the armory?
At the armory. And you might wanna have somebody go close it back up cause it's just a section of it and it's towards, I guess, on the north side of the park. So you could just walk in and out of the fence when it was fenced off all the way through before.
Once they start doing the demolition, that's one of the things that the contractor will be doing is mending the fence because they're going to store their vehicles there while they're doing the demolition. And once the demolition is completed, then the fence belongs to the city. So then that could be used either there or somewhere else. The other thing too is, is like everything else, once you demolish the building, like the comment that was made, that right now it's housing homeless people. Nothing that we have against homeless, but unfortunately with homeless comes the undesirables. Which means that once you tear that down, the homeless have no place to go. So we're hoping that that's going to kinda alleviate some of those undesirable people.
These homeless have been living there for more than a year. It might be hard to get them out.
Well, it's private property and the city is the owner of their property. So it's not the same as evicting them from residence that you gotta give notices.
Yeah.
You go in there, you have a 24-hour notice or you let them know, "Hey, you know what? The thing's coming down."
But actually, we have somebody, somebody goes to the site and see what is going on, if there is people using drugs or anybody from public safety goes there on a daily basis, no? It's an abandon. It's an abandon. It has a fence. The fence is broken. And so it's an abandon. Let's say now, we're voting about closing the street. How long it would take, not for the demolition, we know that this is coming pretty soon. But if we decided tonight that we're gonna close the street, when, when you gonna close it? Is that you're gonna put some barricade to close it first? Or you're gonna just wait until we have the money from the state that we're gonna apply? How long? Give me like a deadline or give me not deadline, like a time, more or less in timing. We're talking one year, two years, three years, four years, five years? We need to know. And I know you're making plot and you're setting the stage. It's all good, Ralph. But I just don't wanna wait five years and to see the same things. I wanna know why so early we're closing the street if we don't even have the money? If we don't even have a plan? If we don't even know what we're gonna do across the street? I think we're jumping the gun. If you come spontaneously and you say, "Look, we've got the money. We're starting demolition." It would be, the next day we'll close the street. What's the hurry in closing the street right now or voting on it tonight if we don't have the other part that we need? Entend this? I mean, you understand?
Right now, the fundings are there for the demolition of the building and the removal of the street. My understanding that once that is done, then the city will tie in the curb and gutter from both ends of the street, so that we'll close it down. As soon as the green light is given to the contractor, because they already have a... The bid has been approved. There's no contract as of yet because we're going through the process. But once they're giving the green light, they will start putting up barricades in the street and they will start giving notices to the people that it's being closed. Even though we have a staff, we have informed them what the intent is and they've been informed of this. But notices will be given out to individuals. There'll be barricades there so that they start seeing that the street will be vacated.
Can you close? Okay, so how come you guys can demo first and then close the street? Do you need a demo and do the street closure at the same time or...?
Well, when the bid went out, it went out for, to do both things at the same time. We received a bid for both, street and building. So at that point, then that's why they're both going to be done. So they'll start with the building. They'll tear the building down. Once they do that, then they'll move over to the street and start removing the asphalt and the base from the street.
So like Commissioner O'Shan said, when do you guys plan to demo the building? Do you guys have timeframe for that? Is it within the next six months?
Oh, no. That would happen when... We would go to the city council at the next meeting and with the recommendation from the planning commission, if that's what the planning commission gives us. And at that point, as soon as the council ratifies the approval that the planning commission has recommended, then they will start. They got their engines running now. As a matter of fact, I received a call from the contractor. His bond is coming, is getting to the point of being expired. So he needs to get going ASAP. And so if nothing else, I mean, depending what happens here, demolition of the building will start even if the street abandonment is not...
Okay, Ralph, one more important question on, as far as infrastructure. IID, gas company, water, there's anything important on that street that might be need, like an encroach, like an easement? No, but I wanna hear it from him. As far as utilities and all that, can you give us?
Well, because it's an open area, there won't be any structures built on that area or at least there's no plan for it. Then the utility companies will have a right of way to be able to go in and do whatever improvements needs to be done. So it's not like they would have to go underground and/or move a building in order to do the improvements. Then that area where all the utilities are running or seems to be running, then that will be cleared. There'll be grass and what needs to be, but it will be accessible to the utilities to be able to go in and do the improvements.
Thank you. I just wanted to be part of it.
One question, Mr. Morales. Can you tell us why, like why did we take that to bid before doing all this? Why did we jump the gun on this? I mean, in a short version, if there is one.
Okay. I can make it real simple. Past administration.
Okay. I heard that before.
I mean, I could go into the long story.
That's fine.
But that was the direction that was given to staff.
Good. And I'm gonna assume that the reason why you wanna get the other part together is to be able to ask for more funding, right, from the state? Bigger park, more land, more funding?
The bigger park, more land. And again, like I said before, because of the area that it's in, then it has a higher percentage or possibility of getting the maximum of funding to do the improvements.
That makes sense.
So, can I ask one?
Go ahead, Ms.
So right now, the city doesn't have a park project per se.
A park park?
A park project.
Oh, park. There's funds right now for different parks in Heber...
Funds through RDA or...
No, funds, state monies, state grants. So there are and I think Cordova has some funding there that's been earmarked. Heber Park, I don't recall. There's maybe another park that has...
Where does that money come from?
From the state.
I know Cordova Park has money from Mesher Ridge.
Uh-huh. Well, maybe that's where Cordova... But there are some state funding that I was informed, and especially in Heber Park, that they're gonna be putting money into.
For Heber Park.
Yeah.
Do you know what they're gonna put in there? Is it gonna be a baseball diamond, soccer field or...?
No, I think it's more improvements like in the restrooms. If I'm not mistaken, Gabby lives over there. I don't know. She knows exactly what's going to be done there. But I know there's improvement. I think part of it was gonna be the restrooms. Yes.
A question is, can you guys put up like a soccer field slash football field there? Cause it seems like everybody wants to put baseball diamonds up, but you know, hey, people wanna play soccer, people wanna play football, you know. If you guys make the field long enough and just, it's just painted lines, you know, you can do two sports in one field.
Yeah. I think when we get to that point, what's going to happen is that there will be public meetings that will be held and to get the consensus of the public as to what they would like to see. I think we did that with Cordova Park. And that way, on what the highest desires are, then that's the direction that the city would go.
I'm gonna agree with Commissioner O'Shan and Young where we all agree with the staff that we do need a park. But we don't wanna see also an eyesore out there and, like he says, abandon the street and just have it fenced up like I mentioned at the last meeting, you know, just have a bunch of abandoned dirt out there. And then months go by or maybe a year go by, there's nothing out there. Just like Cordova Park, that there was a boulder of dirt and staff had no money, staff had no staff, no equipment, what have you, and it's just an eyesore. We don't want the same situation to happen here, especially with the neighborhood that, you know, we have there and, you know, listening to Ms. Garcia here. There's some citizens' concerns about all that vandalism and all those homeless living out there. So there's, the lighting is poor, you know, so all that needs to come into place once you guys tear all that down. But the importance here is that, yeah, we wanna enhance our community. We wanna do it as fast as we can. So if there's no money for equipment and playground, the least they can do is throw some grass seed so that we can have the kids utilize that park for pub owner practice or soccer field practice. Cause they need to see some community activity out there and maybe we can lure the other people out of there and proper lighting. And then, not to mention, we... And then, not to mention, we don't have any police, you know, officers patrolling as much anymore, so, and that, you know, that is concerning to, to most of us.
Well, one of the things that, that could be done is that as soon as the demolition is completed, or maybe even before, to approach the, the park and recreation, and start, so that they can start planning for that, that would be one of my conversations with the ci, city manager, with the budget coming up, then maybe put some money into the budget for that park, for, to put on seed and...
Yeah, either that, or, you know, start asking the community for some donations on something, you know?
Yeah, it's, one of the things that, that, that we can say about Calixco is that there's a lot of groups and, and even individuals that will adopt parks, and I mean, everybody is wanting to adopt a, a retention center, so I would, I would be surprised that, that nobody would wanna adopt that park and, and start getting, you know, asking for donations for seeds or trees, and they did a good job in, in getting donations for their retention, that's right there on, on Andrade and Fifth Street, I think it is. So hopefully they can do the same thing for this park here, where they could start putting up some lighting.
Question after you thought, can we ask the, the contractor that's gonna demo the building out to possibly throw down some seed when he's done?
No.
No? For the donation thing, no?
No.
Adopt the park?
But, I mean, maybe not as a donation, as a condition, period.
Well, the, the...
No, 'cause the bid went out already.
Okay.
The bid has gone out already, isn't it?
That would be something under Recreation Commission.
Yeah.
We could just say, you know, just for them to, like, move SAP on that, so that we don't have some empty dirt lot out there, and, you know...
All right, any other questions? Motion?
Where are people gonna park when they come to this parking? Where are people gonna park when they come to the park? Just around it? Is that enough parking for that huge park?
There'd be enough parking around the area, and the other thing, like I said before, is that when they start to design the park, then that's one of the things that would be designed, is to put up a, a parking area for people to park and, as they go out there to utilize the park and everything, so that would be part of the design.
Designing them, overall?
Yeah.
There is no design concept per?
Not right now at this point. Many years ago, maybe, I think 10, 15 years ago, there, there were some that, that came up, a couple of design concepts. I don't know what happened to, to those drawings. I remember that was when I was at the redevelopment agency that we were moving.
You have it?
Oh, she has it. Okay, well, maybe...
Test them out.
Yeah, we can share that with the planning commission.
So, do we, did we figure if we closed, how the traffic will be circulating? Can you give us like a brief on that?
Well, there, there's three streets here that are going north and, north and, or east and west, so even if you close that street, you got the street on, on the north side, you got a street on the north side, and you got a street on the, on the south side. Usually, for the most part, you know, I know that some are concerned about heavy traffic trucks, because there's a trucking area, they very rarely use that street. They, they'll come down, what's that, I wanna call it Ollie, I don't know if that's Ollie or not, but they, they'll come down that street, because that's where all the businesses are at, so you won't have any heavy traffic that, that would have to go around.
So the trucks will be using McKinley? Is that the one?
McKinley, is that the one going north and south?
The dead end one?
That's, that's what they use right now.
Okay.
No, I think they'll use Harold Avenue, 'cause you have the Claudia's registration in that truck stop right there when it goes down further and it turns.
Harold Avenue and McKinley.
This is a, I think this is a house. This is housing.
What's across the street from Gabby? What's across the, the lot across the street from you? What is that exactly?
Apartments.
Is that, is that empty lot?
No, it's, uh, what used to be the Old Yellow Bridge, and I think there's still some trucks there.
So truck parking?
Oh, they're using, is it truck parking?
There's still some parking going on there. Not much, but there's still some.
How about the, um, Newport of Entry?
We should buy that lot.
Will that impact that area, Ralph?
Buy it and make it, huge park.
No.
Not bigger, huge.
Well, like, no, not at all?
Where's the armory here? Armory. That's where it is, north, that way, that's where it is right there. And this is map?
No impact, whatever.
That's wrong. It's like that.
Look at this, with the mix mesh.
This is the, this is the... And where's the park? This is the park. Okay, all right, all right.
That's what it is.
Maybe it's over here.
There's not gonna be no impact?
Got it.
From, from the Newport of Entry?
No. No, there won't be any impact from the Newport of Entry.
Gabby, if you start that fund for donations, I'll give you a hundred dollars.
Okay, do some fun music.
We can ask you're out there with a can.
We'll go to call your business.
Okay, so what's, what's, what is the wish, what is the wishes of the, I, I, you know, I'm just thinking, you know, close it now, but then wait on it two, three years. Okay, if we're gonna close it now, if we're gonna vote on closing it now, I don't wanna get closed tomorrow, okay? In other word, if we're gonna close it, let's close it when we close, close enough to the, the project. Don't just close it because you don't wanna have traffic there, you know what I mean?
The, the street won't be closed until construction starts.
Okay, that's...
When is that?
So...
That's the only condition.
Next month?
Next month.
Thirty days, thirty days? The, well, the bid went out already, you say, right? And it was awarded already?
The, the bid went out, it was awarded, and all we have to do is issue the, the agreement. What we need to do now with the, the approval of the planning commission, and then we will go to the council to ratify your recommendation, so that will be at the next meeting within two weeks.
Next week.
Next week.
Well, now, oh, next week, yeah.
Ralph, maybe...
So demolition of the armory begins, per that agreement, when?
It would, it would begin probably about between, after the council meeting, it would probably begin after 10 days, because it, it would have to go to the...
City council?
Well, go to the city council, and then it has to go to the state of business. They have to inform...
So 30 days?
Yeah, I, I think it'll be less than 30 days, because all the business has been removed, but the contractor just gotta give notice to the state that they're gonna do that demolition.
Ralph, do we have a signage on the, on the, by the armory building, where we like informing the, the, the public that this area is gonna be demolished and a future park is coming, something like that? Do we have any signage? I just thought maybe we should let the people know about closing the street, and not just wake up in the morning and say, oh, I can cross by. Let them know in advance, you know, maybe that's the route that takes the school, the kids to school, maybe that's the route, you know, the senior citizen in the area, they wanna go for walk. So let's, let's, you know, do it right, and, and there's no people here, nobody came, I'm surprised, but at least if we're gonna do that, let's put some signage and inform them, maybe in the water bill or something. Gabby's the only one who came. I don't know what she, what she heard it for. Maybe in the water bill, we should tell them, or, I don't know how, we should let them know.
Is there a motion on the floor, Mr. Morales?
Yeah, I make a motion to approve the enclosure of the street, with condition that it's gonna be closed to the construction time period.
After the demolition?
Yes.
All right.
The demolition of the armory.
So it will be closed during construction?
Yes.
By not before?
Yes.
Okay. You got that, Mr. Morales?
Yes.
All right, is there a second?
I have a second.
All is in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Aye? If you pass?
Aye, okay.
All right, what else? What's next?
That is it?
Wait, hold on, hold on, hold on. Any business items? Informational items? Planning commissioner comments?
Um, I have a comment. Now that we were talking about the Cordova Parks, can we get an update as to what's going on over there? 'Cause I'm, I got, I got someone asking me, what was the final approved set of plans for Cordova Park? Because apparently Councilman Leal, is that his name? Real or Leal? He posted on his Facebook account a site plan, and, you know, with bells and whistles, saying this was approved, and ta-da, here it is. But then someone else that, you know, talks to Ms. Estrada, she's, they said, that is not what Ms. Estrada said that we were gonna have out there. So I'm like, the, the park belongs to the city, to the community, not to Estrada or to certain social cliques. So when I asked, and I asked before to the former engineer, where are the final set of plans for Cordova Park? And I'm talking years back, he was still working with the architect, design and administration. So we never, I never got a set of the approved Cordova Park, you know, proposed park project. So do we have one already? Well, are we still working with that?
I could check on that. Since I haven't been working on that project, and I, I'm not sure where it's at, but I can check and, and see, and then I can bring something to it.
Yeah, I, I would appreciate to see what's exactly, I mean, going to be out there, since it's the community.
Is it moving forward, or?
Yeah, from what I understand, right, it's moving forward.
I think there's some equipment going up there, they haven't put it in yet. As far as the second phase of it, I'm, I'm not sure what, I know that they gotta move a lot of dirt, and I, and I read the same message that you did, and my understanding was that before they can move dirt, they have to have a project, they gotta give, I guess, 50 days notice that the project is coming in, and then they can start moving the dirt.
Right.
That would be if the city is going to utilize some of that dirt, and that would be a good time also to take some of that dirt over to this project over here, and, and start leveling off the, the area to, to get it ready for planning.
Yeah, because like I said, there's a lot of people in the community who are eager to see that Cordova Park complete, and, you know, come to a completion there, because like Mr. Rodrigo said, we need some pub wanna fields now that the high school has taken more of their square footage that they anticipated for the part, for the pool, and they have actually kicked the pub wanna kids out of that soccer field that they used to use in the front for practice. So now we have a bunch of pub wanna kids with no pub wanna field to, to, to practice on a daily basis. So we have a lot of open land that is not, you know, parks, dedicated parks, that we haven't completed because of whatever, lack of staff or funds, and we need to have that completed already. So if we can get an update, that will be fine, and maybe get, what's it called? Schedule of events of when and how they're going to start doing all the work.
Okay, I'll, I'll try to get it.
Can we have that by next meeting?
I'll, I'll try to get it for the next meeting, yes.
Any other comments, commissioners?
No.
No, you're sure? All right. Is there a motion to adjourn the meeting?
So move.
Second?
I'll second it too.
All right.
Be in the adjournment. Thank you.